Now it's time for showcase Brainerd. And Mary, do you want to do the introduction of Amy Gray?
Okay, well, we have Amy Gray with us tonight and she's going to talk about the Franklin Art Center. It's been quite a while since we've had an update on that. I know there have been a lot of changes and so I think this is something that's very timely and we all want to learn about. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you for having me. Well, as Mary said, I'm here on behalf of Franklin Art Center. And Franklin began as a junior high, as I'm sure we're all well, hopefully well aware, in 1932. I myself was a student at Franklin Junior High School. My grandfather was a teacher there. There's a lot of history in that building. And it stopped being a junior high, I believe, I'm going to say 1999, when the middle school opened up over in Baxter, Forest View. And Franklin Art Center fully opened as an art center in 2008 when both residential and commercial sides were available. Franklin was purchased by Art Space, which is an organization which began in 1979 in Minneapolis. And it began as a way of connecting artists who needed a place to live with landlords with affordable housing. And what they found was that when the artists moved into a certain blighted or neglected area of town, it tended to cause a revitalization in that area. And when that happened, property values rose and consequently the rents also rose and essentially drove out the very people who had spurred the development. So what Art Space drove to do was to create a space where artists could live in a nicer area, where they were able to do their art and focus on that full-time if they're, if possible, and have the rents be affordable so that if the area did improve as had been the history, that the artists wouldn't be driven out. So that's what they've done here at Franklin Art Center. And there are 25 residential units within Franklin and it is a tax credit property run by Art Space. And so they do receive tax credits from the government and ways to help subsidize the housing for the artists in order to, again, bring about redevelopment. Well, that's the ideal, the attention. And the other side of the building is about close to 38,000 square feet, which is used for commercial art space and then also for artistic businesses or other businesses. So currently, we have photographers, painters, potters, advertising, Red House Media has their offices there, a couple of dance studios, textiles, just a great yarn shop, knitting, if anybody does knitting. And the Crossing Arts Alliance also has their office there. And the Crossing Arts Alliance has their mission to enhance arts opportunities in the Central Lakes area. And they do a lot of great arts programming for children as well as adults through Franklin Art Center. And the Journey North Church also leases space. The school district leases the auditoriums and the gymnasiums. So we have a lot of activities going on with youth sports. And the Journey North Church, as I said, they rent the auditorium and they also lease a lot of the other spaces available. So we have a lot of activity going on. It's a very busy place. Franklin Art Center is open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to the public. The different businesses there all have their own hours that they set, so it's kind of up to the different shop owners as far as when they're going to be open for business. But it is open to the public. And with these bitterly cold temperatures that we've been having and people are getting cooped up, we also are open to the public for walking. So it's a great place to walk. You can check out local artists, you can stroll through the building, a couple of different floors, so you get some extra exercise on the stairs. But it's a really, it's a nice place to go. I have children and we like to walk through the halls, so it's a good place to burn off some energy while looking at some nice local artwork as well. And I think that might be about it as far as what I have to share with Franklin Art Center. We, as far as our goals, I mean, the goal is really to provide artists and residents a place to live that's affordable, that's a place that spurs their creativity so that they can contribute creatively and artistically to the community, and also provide a commercial space for residents or for artists to do the same thing. So it's really a great way to contribute to the artistic community and it's a way to provide kind of a big city cultural opportunity for people living in a small town. Do you have any questions?
I've been in there, it's great. It's a great facility and I've even used some of the facilities there, you know, photography and stuff. You're totally right, it's one of the best places in town as far as, especially this time of the year when you're all cooped up and I wish a lot of people would get a chance just to walk through all the stores and shops there.
I think it's one of the best-kept secrets in Brainerd. I think a lot of people don't realize what Franklin Art Center has to offer, which is a lot of great businesses, especially around the holiday time. It's a fantastic place to get your holiday shopping done. I know we're kind of past that right now, but there are a lot of different opportunities to explore your artistic opportunity, artistic options, I guess you could say. The Q Gallery, which is operated by the Franklin Art Center, has a great gallery showings for local artists. And it's an opportunity for us, like I said, to kind of have this big-city cultural experience while living in a small town and having all the benefits of small-town living. I think very few people realize how beneficial it really is for us and how fortunate we are to have the Crossing Arts Alliance and Franklin Art Center right here in our back door.
What is the criteria for an artist to receive the subsidized department?
It's actually a really rigorous process that artists go through in order to live there. There are financial requirements. You need to have income in order to support the rent, but you can't make too much. So there's an income requirement. You need to be able to prove that you're an artist. There's an artist interview that is, that is held. You need to show a portfolio of your work to both commercial and residential artists and determine or answer a bunch of questions essentially as to how living at Franklin Art Center is going to support your art, how do you plan to contribute to the community, and how is melding the two going to be beneficial for you.
Does that ever followed up on? Once they're approved, is it ever followed up to see if they're actually doing those things?
Once they meet the requirements, it's, it's...
They're there?
You're there.
They're there.
But I can attest, I actually live at Franklin Art Center. I'm a writer and I went through the artist interview and showed my portfolio and did all of that. And the people that I live with, my neighbors, are definitely practicing their art. If you walk in Franklin Art Center, you can see right now there are mobiles, metalwork done by Jessica Vassos, who lives next door to me. And a neighbor across the hall is a musician, neighbors down the hall are musicians, you can hear them going, you know, throughout the, throughout the day, they're practicing their music. And there are painters, people sell jewelry. We do also have a resident artist gallery, which is run primarily by Martin and Mitchell Nelson, who also own commercial space or rent commercial space. And they're painters, father-son team, and they run that resident artist gallery, which updates their showings, I want to say, well, at least quarterly. But I know they do a really nice job in getting the resident artists there to show their work and to exhibit.
Is it full?
Right now, it's, last I knew it was full.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Amy, one of the things that I'm talking about going through that I've gone through where some of the artists actually live or they have their own rooms and that, and you would not believe the, what I would say, the beauty of what they have created and to, the atmosphere that they've made in their own abode, so to speak. And it's really neat to see the difference. They've had open houses where people could come and, you know, go through the different ones that has the, they would allow them to go through and that. And it's really neat, I mean, it just, and like you say, you've got some very talented stain, the stained glass, he does just a super job of, and then his wife does all of the little beads and that for some of the lights and, you know, you, there are some very, very talented people in that building, so.
There really are and it's, you know, when we moved in, my, my daughter is eight years old and she said, I said, "We need to be an artist to live here," because she's noticing all the artwork on the walls and through the resident area. And she said, "Well, you're not an artist." And I said, "Well, I'm a writer and that counts." And then she said, "Well, I'm an artist, so that's fine." And the first thing she and my son did was paint pictures and hang them all over the apartment and outside of our doors so that they could have their art up just like everybody else in our hallway and in our building. So it's really a great place of, I mean, it's helped me feel more creative, it's a wonderful space. I mean, you feel like you're in an urban loft, you know, as Mayor Welling said, if you have an opportunity to come into the residential side, it's really, it's really impressive to see what they're offering here in Brainerd. And it's, it's a really creative space and they're finding new ways all the time to figure out how can we, you know, spur more creative, creativity, how can we provide more opportunities for the resident artists in order to, to really do our work. So it's, it's really been a fun place to live. We've been there for just over a year and we've been very happy there. Feel very supported.
Yes, Kelly.
Amy, do you work for Art Space?
I don't, actually, I'm a resident and I was asked if I would come up here and present on behalf of them.
Okay, does Art Space have like an office in there? I thought they were like out east somewhere or something.
Art Space is based out of Minneapolis. And they have several properties throughout Minnesota and across the country, primarily, I think they're three or four in Minneapolis and a few in St. Paul, Fergus Falls, Duluth, which is Washington's, is a middle school in Duluth as well that was refurbished into an Art Space, and then Franklin. And then they have properties in Iowa, Michigan, California, kind of across, I think, Washington, DC, Baltimore area. So they are everywhere. And, but it is a, it's a Minneapolis-based organization, but there is an onsite building manager. Bridger Equity is actually, they're out of St. Cloud, I believe, but they actually manage the property, but Art Space owns it.
Okay.
So we do have onsite representation from Bridger Equities. That's Lori Schmelzer and she's the site manager. Yes, so if anybody's interested in renting space or if you'd like to learn more about Franklin, you can certainly contact Lori. Her number is 454-0824. Again, 454-0824. Or you can go to Facebook, we're on Facebook, under Franklin Art Center, and we try to update that regularly, as well as some of our commercial artists. John Erickson, a local photographer, attorney, as you may know, John Erickson, he's a very active poster on our Facebook page. He takes some beautiful photographs and he has a space at Franklin Art Center, as well as Evelyn Matthews, who's a very talented painter. We have stained glass, we have textile workers, like I said, photographers. It's, it's a really neat space and when you come through and you really get a feel for the different types of artists that are working and living at Franklin Art Center.
Thank you for updating us.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to take a two-minute break?
Yeah.
We'll start in two minutes. Brainerd City Council meeting for Monday, Sep...
March 3rd.
March 3rd. I was just, sorry, I was looking at, what was the date on my, I don't know why it's got that. Anyway, today's March 3rd.
September 3rd.
January 3rd.
Page 2.
Anyway, welcome, welcome. And, uh...
Roll call.
Mayor?
Here.
Beavins?
Here.
Sheeler?
Here.
Porcanhagen?
Here.
Cope?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries.
Motion to drop the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, so.
Beavins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
On the consent calendar, again, I'd like to just mention that we still have two openings for the Cable Advisory Committee, two openings for the Library Board, and three openings for the Transportation Advisory Committee. Mr. Beavins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personal and Finance recommends we approve the bills as presented in my summary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's our roll call.
It is a roll call. Beavins?
Yes.
Sheeler?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Tony's not here, but next on our agenda is, agenda is the announcement of Bonnie Cumberland Miracle Field. Do you want to say anything?
The Parks Department met at a meeting last week. It was agreed that that was a great idea and that was their decision.
So it's still Bain Park, but the Miracle League Field is the field that's being renamed Bonnie Cumberland Miracle League Field.
Can I make the comment?
Yes.
One of the things in, in the paper, they had mentioned about the fact that she was very, Bonnie was really involved in it and she also had a bunch of us playing the wiffle ball. And I think one of the main reasons that they had a bunch of council people in us play wiffle ball was that this is a miracle field and that is for challenged people. And I think what she wanted to do is to show us how to be very, very humble in the way that we played that ball game, because I tell you what, I've never been that humble in my life, I mean, to tell you. And to be able to hit that little wiffle ball, I think most of us, the, she said the object of the thing was to win. Well, not really to win, but let everybody else win. But it was challenging and if anybody's never played wiffle ball, you should try it at least once because it will humble you very much.
Well, they call it Big Whiff for a reason.
I bet they do. Anyway, so, but I'm very proud and pleased to have the Parks Board to make that as Bonnie Cumberland Miracle Field, because I think she really was involved in, in that. And to me, it'd be a nice honor for her to carry on in perpetuity, so.
Mr. Chairman, somewhat related to this, I was contacted by a citizen who told me that another citizen of this town has contributed hugely to a miracle field. I'm not going to mention the names now, but this is what I was told and this citizen wondered if there was going to be any recognition of them.
There, there are plaques that are...
Okay.
...being made.
Okay.
And I don't know...
The large contributors.
Yeah, Tony's got that information, but that's...
Then I can go back and just say that it's, okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you need any action from here?
No.
Do you want any?
We did that last time.
Okay, so yeah, that's what I thought.
We pushed it on to the...
Okay, so this is information on...
Yep.
Okay.
Miss Minnesota United Pageant, who's going to do a presentation?
Overall.
Okay, here you go.
All right. All right, I'm Bill Musel, Citizen of the Year, co-director of the Miss United States Pageant, and now co-director of the Miss United States State Pageant that was just held at the Landmark Center in St. Paul. And I'm co-director with my lovely wife, Vicki. And she's going to introduce lovely Rebecca Shores here in just a minute. But for the council members, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for letting us take up your time tonight. If you can remember, Becca, when she was here eight months ago, she was our local title holder at that point. And then, of course, she went on to compete at state and came back and, and she won. She did a wonderful job there. I think you'll, you'll find out tonight when she speaks a little bit about just how much she's grown and as an individual. And that's the thing that keeps me connected to this, it's, it's watching these young women grow and being able to speak in public and just handle themselves. I mean, it, it's amazing. Vicki will talk a little bit too about the people that helped us. It takes a village to run a state pageant, not only a local pageant, but this was our first time. We went down there in that snowstorm, in that blizzard, and the people from Brainerd, you would all be so proud of the people that went down and helped us out. Billy Holiday from the radio station was our emcee. We had Jeremy Doyle that was here, he was doing our videotaping. Allison Lord Block and her mom, they came down, helped backstage. All the people that, and the moseys were there taking pictures. The thing that resonated throughout the whole thing, the whole three days, at the very end, yes, we crowned, you know, two winners, but what resonated for me was the fact that all St. Paul could talk about was how wonderful the Brainerd girls were and how wonderful they loved our community and the way that they helped all the girls, not just our girls, but the way they helped all the girls. We went to an after-party at the St. Paul Hotel. I don't know if you've ever been there. I had never been there. That place is ritzy. When I walked in there and I seen Becca and Hannah standing down front, I know that we, I knew that we had arrived. And the people, absolutely, that's all they could talk about was how well behaved and, and how well Brainerd pulled together and pulled this off, so. We can give our, we can give our community a round of applause, not just me and Vicki or our girls, but our, our community as well. So with that, I'd like to bring up Joe Johnson. Joe is a local lion here in town and last year, they made the scholarships available to our girls. And we just want to let Joe say a few words and then Vicki will come up with Becca.
Hey, I guess I'm completely unprepared. I was told last minute to show up and I didn't always even saying a few words up until a few minutes ago. So on behalf of the Brainerd Lions Clubs, congratulations. The Brainerd Lions has been, have been around for more than 90 years, helping the, the community with scholarship opportunities, both for the pageants through CLC. We're a large contributor to the Miracle Field, the Veterans Center at CLC. We also help run Camp Vinassic. So I'm, what else? I guess that's it for me. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much, Joe. We really appreciate the Lions so very much. Again, I'm going to reiterate, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. The Miss United States program has been around for many years. It has just newly been brought back to the Minnesota area. So this state pageant that we just had was the third year that it's been in Minnesota for a long time. So we're really proud to be part of the program. It is also one of the fastest-growing pageant systems in the nation right now. And we are ranked third to Miss USA, Miss America, and then us. So we're, we're gaining ground and momentum and I'm really proud to have the pageant here in Brainerd and be part of the state pageant also. I am, was born and raised in Brainerd and I'm extremely proud of my community. And to be able to, not only when we did the Miss Brainerd Lakes Pageant, not only to be part of that, but now to be part of this organization and to have Brainerd represented at the state level is extremely important to me. So I'm really, really excited to educate everybody on who and what we are. Bill covered most of what I wanted to say about how proud we were of all the Brainerd people down there. And it's true, beyond Rebecca and Hannah winning the crowns, the thing that meant the most to me was to hear people say how nice the Brainerd girls were. And for us to be in a position that we are in with running the state pageant and also having local girls, it could have been real messy. People could have really resented us, but they didn't. And our girls did such an amazing job representing this community. I'm so proud of them. And I know we haven't had a chance to talk to Rebecca about all what was said about our girls, but they were, I think. So you don't want to listen to me, you want to listen to Rebecca. So anyway, if I could introduce our new Miss Teen Minnesota United States, Rebecca Shores.
First off, I want to say thank you. Last year, I was here, eight months ago, and I could not speak in front of anybody. And without having a support from everybody, I wouldn't be here. So I want to thank the Brainerd Lions again, Waylon, Mayor Waylon. I would like to thank city council members for all your support. I've gone through a lot in eight months and it was nothing I ever would have expected. I had a goal as Miss Teen Brainerd and it was, main, the main goal was to help spread awareness to my platform, and that's underage drinking. And then I didn't know where I was going to go from it. I didn't know how I was going to go with it. There's so many options I could do. I mean, I'm at, I'm at a little local level, I mean, seventeen, sixteen, turning seventeen in high school, going through a lot. And so what I did is I prepared myself. I knew that I had the opportunity then to represent Minnesota. And with that, I could go with my platform at now a larger level. So I've been practicing. I was practicing pretty constant there for a couple of months, focusing on what I wanted to become. And now that I am your Miss Teen Minnesota, I have an ample amount of opportunity. I have three main goals, though. Number one would be my platform. I've been to an AA meeting where I have ideas of what to do and many, many folks there have talked to me about what I could do. And possibly, the biggest thing I could do was not go to them and tell them not to drink because that doesn't help. I mean, they go to, go to your fifth-grade classroom, that doesn't help because you grow out of that. But what, what this man helped me realize was, these kids don't realize the situation until they're actually into it, how bad of a situation drinking can be until they're presented in it. Teenagers think, think that they're invincible. And if you can stop that and put them into the situation, put them into a jail cell for a day, they'll realize that before they take the next caution step before. They'll be cautious. So my plan for us to start out is to try to start an organization or connect with people that could put these teenagers into real-life situations. My second plan, my second goal as Miss Teen Minnesota, would be to spread the greatness of what a great organization this is. Because just eight months ago, like I said, I wouldn't be here. I grew the most, I think I grew the most in my life from eight months till now, from June until now. And that's something that you can't get really very much anywhere. I felt, I feel belong, like I feel like I belong to this. This organization takes girls and young women and they put them to where they belong. It's not like saying, though, this young girl is going to be in pageants and she'll belong, she'll feel like she belongs. There's some people that don't feel that way. But what now we can do is we, a lot of kids and a lot of young girls can come to us and ask for help of where they belong. And we can help them direct them. This young girl, Emily, she is going to compete for Miss Junior Teen Brainerd, and I am very, very excited for that. I can just see her grow. I'm excited to see somebody else grow. I know how much of I've grown, I know, I've been told how much I've grown. So I'm excited to get more people and see how they grow. The third thing, my third goal as Miss Teen Minnesota, would be to attend as many, many Relay for Life events across the state as I can. I did do the Brainerd, the Brainerd Relay for Life. Relay for Life is the national platform. I want to connect, connect more with people. I want to support people, support people that support more people. And I'll be there and try to grow more Relay for Lives. I know what a great influence it has, it has been on my life, and I want to spread that, too. Now I want to talk about how many events I have been in, in eight months. I've been in over 35 events. I would have never been able to do that without a title. It's like it's a new power, it's a new level, it's a new opportunity. And I'm blessed to say that I had that. Bill and Vicki helped me all the way. It's, they call me up in the morning, "Becca, can you do this today?" It's like, "Yeah, I think I can, and I can." I did, one day I did three events in one day. And I was so excited and I felt so good and I helped many, many people. Bill and Vicki have been there, I mean, after, after I won Miss Teen Minnesota, the cries and the, the joy and the, how, how I felt like I succeeded, you know? It was, all this hard work really does pay off. I was sticking through it as, as a goal of mine and I finally reached it. And I'm speaking in front of you, I couldn't, I couldn't before. I really couldn't. Where do I go from here? This is the last thing I have to say because I'm taking up some of your time and I appreciate it. The next step I have is going to Nationals over the Fourth of July. And I am very excited for this opportunity. I have never been on a plane, haven't been anywhere tropical or anything like that, so I'm very excited to not only go to Washington DC over the Fourth of July, but be there with my sister queen Hannah. Hannah's a junior teen, Miss Junior Teen Minnesota. She's a very, very, very sweet, wise young woman. And I believe it'll be a great journey. Even if we don't go it far, we've learned so much on this journey to become and to try to be Miss United States title holders. I would like to have a shout-out to my sister queen Jackie Thurlo. She has been there. Us Brainerd girls, they call us the Brainerd girls down at state, we have been together and we do so many things together and we're there for each other. We hug each other, we cry, we jump in the cold water like... other, we cry, we jump in the cold water like last week together. It's something we do together and it's a relationship that we form. It's a sisterhood. It really is. And people say, you know, it's not, oh, it's just fish posh, you know, you're just going to become a family, family. But it's a new family. And just last week, I gained a lot more family members. So, I'm really excited that I'm here now in Miss Teen Minnesota United States 2014. And I appreciate everybody's support. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We give a round of applause.
Yes, I do.
Bill?
Anything else, Bill?
If I can. You maybe mentioned about Hannah Northberg as far as she was...
She brought Hannah twice this year.
Yeah.
Exactly. Hannah is our Miss Minnesota's junior teen for the United States program. She couldn't be here this evening because she isn't feeling well, but she went down also and competed and walked away with the title. So, we have the two girls from Brainerd that will be in Washington DC over the Fourth of July. I actually attended the pageant last year in Washington and it was amazing. The girls get to be in a parade on Capitol Hill, which was really cool. The city just opens its arms up for all of these girls. They walk around, they're expected to wear their sashes at all times, so they're really well noticed. So, Minnesota will be really well represented, of course. Hannah did an amazing job at State. She has really blossomed, just like Rebecca has. And that is definitely what drives both Bill and I so much is to see these girls grow. I think I mentioned when I was at the meeting last time, I was a former title holder also. And the growth that I achieved and the confidence, et cetera, I love to pass on to these young women. Jackie Thurlo also competed at the state pageant. Jackie was the swimsuit winner and she also won Miss Congeniality, which is very esteemed. So, we're really proud of Jackie. She didn't walk away with the title, but she walked away with a lot of experience, growth also, and represented us extremely well. So, we're sorry that they can't be here this evening and that Rebecca is here representing both of them very well.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and really, we're proud of you and what you've done and accomplished and wish you the very best as you go out to the Capitol and walk in. And neither one of you, I understand, have flown in a plane, so you'll have a lot of new experiences. Best of luck to you. And thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one, of course, was the approval of the bills that's been dispensed with. Item number two is the Administrative Department Accounts Payable Administrative Specialist Position. The motion is to approve a conditional job offer two. And if you pick up, there's a separate piece of paper from Finance Director Hillman. The motion is to approve the position as presented for Accounts Payable Administrative Specialist Hiring to Darla Johnson. The conditional job offer is subject to successful completion of a pre-employment background drug credit check exams with a tentative start date of March 24, 2014. It's recommended that the starting pay be established at 85% of base rate for the position as noted in the union contract or $19.04 per hour, which is considered Step A of the Salary Administrative Plan and I so move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Three, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is a Parks Department item. The motion is to approve the request to purchase the mower with the capital improvement funds with a final cost of $1,000, or I'm sorry, $15,342 and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a note, just a couple of things. One, this is a demo model. It does have a few hours on it. It is out-of-factory warranty, but it does have the additional Toro Protection plus comprehensive coverage through August 2015 through the distributor MTI. That's item number one. Item number two is if you recall back to the actual request for equipment certificates, this was itemized as a field groomer. Ironically, and in my motion, this is a mower. And I'd like to just explain real briefly for people who know the difference, they're not the same pieces of equipment. And we really needed the field groomer so bad that it blew up and it didn't make it till tonight. It actually gave up the ghost last summer and ended up having to be repaired. So, it couldn't make it. We use it. We have a backup field groomer, but we couldn't make it to the point where we got to the equipment certificates where we could replace the one that needed to be replaced. So, we fixed the one we had and now we'd like to replace the mower that has taken over the dilapidated position number one. And our administrator assures us that within the legal realm of equipment certificates, we're okay. And this also, with the three items that the Parks Department is purchasing, the pickup truck, which we heard, which we've talked about, the satellite lifter, and now the mower, we're still roughly $4,500 under the predicted $60,000 for the certificates. So, rather lengthy, but just in case somebody was paying attention, this is not a field groomer. It's a mower. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Three, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last thing, the Fire Department issue. The motion is to approve the request to retain Fire Equipment Operator Cory Zion until the workman's compensation leave status of FEO Dunham is determined per the Fire Chief's request with one change on the memo. If you note at the bottom of Chief Stunek's request, he asked that Cory Zion be retained indefinitely. That word will be stricken. It still reads fine. I'm going to read the last paragraph. At this time, I'm requesting Cory Zion be retained as Fire Equipment Operator until there is a definite decision made as to if and when FEO Dunham may or may not return to work. And I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Bevins. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not part of the motion, but just a little bit on the dollars and cents. We have budgeted for a Fire Equipment Operator. This, we will have a Fire Equipment Operator. It will be Cory Zion instead of Dunham. Now, the workman's comp, we are covered under workman's comp. They cover roughly 60% of workman's comp. And so, we won't actually see a net difference on our budget at all. We don't expect to see it. But just because we, this is personal finance, we always like to be conscious of the beans.
Mr. President, on the SAFER grant, have we heard, or do you expect to hear anything on the SAFER grant?
If I can, Mr. President. The SAFER grant, they come out with letters either on Wednesday and Friday. A lot of times, we get a phone call. Sometimes, it's an email. We check at least once or twice a week. There have been letters going out for refusals of SAFER grants. So far, knock on wood, we are not in that category. We're still in the funding pile. So, it's a matter of when we get to that hearing.
Thank you.
That's all we can say. No other discussion? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. End of report.
Thank you.
Safety and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items on the agenda. The first one is the downtown landscape request by Mr. Mink and he's here in the audience. The motion out of committee will be to approve Mr. Mink's request. And according to Mark, he would adhere to the landscape and maintenance program that they have currently going on downtown. And on that motion, and this motion would also include the Kokomo because currently they're doing the same thing that Mr. Mink is asking. So, I would so move.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
I think we should point out that Mr. Mink will continue to pay his assessment for the downtown project. As you know, there is a contract let for landscaping downtown and the property owners are assessed a certain amount. And Mr. Mink is not asking to be absolved from his share. He will continue to pay that, which is about $900, he said. However, he feels that he can do a better job in front of his own property and is willing to do that at his own expense and his own work. So, I just thought that should be pointed out.
Any other discussion?
Cover everything, Mark?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number two, improvement 13-06-28 Street Construction. There was one minor change on the price of that and everybody got a memo dropped on. Instead of $147,000 is proposed to be assessed, that number will be $161,918. That'll be the change that Jeff passed out. And then, there'll still be the payment from Oaklawn Township for $42,750. So, the toll that we will receive will be $203,668. And that would be the motion. The motion is actually to adopt the resolution receiving report and calling for a public hearing to be conducted at 7:30 PM, Monday, April 7, 2014.
And I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number three, special committee meeting Tuesday, March 11, 2014. We put some stuff on the agenda and we'll talk about a couple of items at that. It'll be the infrastructure status, building rebate programs, the grant application, citywide cleanup, and some miscellaneous. And do we need a motion for that to move forward, Jeff? Okay, it's for information.
We will have to adjourn to the special meeting at the conclusion of the meeting tonight.
Item number four, frozen sewer services. I think it's going to be best explained by Jeff at the moment, just for a clear understanding for the public. Go ahead, Jeff.
If I can, I think a lot of the PNF Committee probably heard the last part of that discussion in Safety and Public Works, but we are experiencing a few problems with our sewer system. These are some of the manholes on the very ends of our system that are relatively shallow and they're shallow because everything flows downhill. So, they are the ends and have very low flow volumes. A lot of times in alleys and on some of the streets, these very end manholes actually have sewer services coming into the structure itself from residential properties. And because the frost is so deep, we are seeing some of these manholes icing up from the low flows that we have on the ends. And in a couple of cases, that has caused sewer services to block and to actually freeze back towards the property lines or back away from the main towards the properties. So, in a couple of these cases, I guess the question is when we get notified of this type of a blockage, we check the manhole, we'll free up the manhole, clean out the manhole, but we really don't have any way to thaw out the service that froze away from the manhole. And again, they're freezing caused by the fact that our manhole froze up. So, the discussion we had in committee is what responsibility the city should take for thawing out those services. And staff's recommendation in this was to, you know, since they did freeze because of the city system freezing, that we would have property owners contact a plumber or someone with thawing equipment to thaw their service from the house side and then submit their bills for that to the city. We would reimburse them then through the insurance fund.
I just have a quick question. When you were talking about that earlier in the committee, one of the questions I had, you indicated that the problem is because of slow water.
Right.
How does that correlate to the fact that the PUC wants people to have running water at a slow amount? Is that counterproductive or is that different?
It's different a little bit. You know, a lot of these, the manholes that we've had the problems at are way on the end of the system. And I think as long as people, even on the ones end of the system, as long as they're running water that's a steady stream and I think Brainerd Public Utilities is set about a pencil width, that's going to be enough flow for a steady trickle. That shouldn't freeze. Where we really see problems is if people have a small leak in a toilet or a drippy faucet, something like that where the flow is very, very slow. That definitely can cause a sewer line to freeze up.
So, the motion from committee here is, you know, that the property owners to notify a plumber or whoever and then the city would reimburse them through the insurance company as Jeff has mentioned.
I'll second the motion.
I just have a quick question on that. Under what circumstances will we do the reimbursement? I mean, how do we determine which ones, I mean, we can't really say we'll do the reimbursement without setting criteria as to which ones we will pay and which ones we won't pay.
The only ones would be, the only cases we've run across and there's only been three or four, and we hope that we don't run into too many more, but on some of these dead-end manholes, we could. But typically, we'll get a call from a property owner, their sewer isn't working, they've got a backup in their basement. We always check our system first and it'll be very obvious to us when the sewer crew pops the manhole, they'll be able to determine whether or not there's enough of a ice buildup in our manhole to cause their services to freeze back.
So, to clarify, it's the ones that the city is responsible for?
Correct. Only those that the city is responsible for.
If I can clarify the motion, I didn't catch it.
Yeah, I'm going to let Jeff go and repeat the motion.
Pardon?
The motion. They want to hear the motion all over.
I guess the staff's recommendation on that would then be to, in cases where sewer services have frozen because of the city system freezing up, that we would reimburse property owners for having their sewer services thawed out.
Second from me.
Other discussion?
Kelly?
I have a question. I don't know if it's discussion, but in circumstances such as this in the past, it strikes me as, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we've got members who've been here longer, that we always ask the homeowners to submit it to their homeowner's insurance.
First, first.
And I feel comfortable with that not, I would feel much better for consideration, not for reimbursement. And I'm going to vote for it this way because your motion almost sounds automatic. And it bothers me that that's the case. Not to say that it wouldn't be under those circumstances, but I really think they should submit to their homeowner's insurance first. I had to do that when I had a claim on construction to the city and my insurance covered it. So, and then consideration implies that we will consider it as opposed to having Jeff run over and write a check. And I just feel more comfortable having the council hear the circumstances and approve the reimbursement rather than make it automatic. So, I'm going to vote against the motion, not right as it sits right now and not because I'm against the exact circumstances that you suggested for reimbursement for the two reasons that are not stated in the motion.
Mr. Chair, I think there's another side to that in my opinion. If the homeowner submits it first to his homeowner's insurance and it's paid, the homeowner's insurance will likely go up. It through no fault of the homeowner. And that isn't fair either. And so, I think that Jeff has been very clear on this, both in committee and here, at least in my opinion. The city will check to determine if it is the city's fault. And only then would they submit the claim to our insurance company. That strikes me as fair and honorable instead of making the homeowner jump through hoops that he may or may not be paid for, but even if he is from his insurance, his insurance is going to go up through no fault of his own, through no carelessness, through nothing, through the city's fault. And so, I think the motion the way it is is all right because it does put the, Jeff, the city will first of all, through Jeff's department, determine the cause of the problem. If it is the city's fault, the city should pick it up, in my opinion. So, that's the way I would look at it.
Jeff?
Just mention real briefly, we absolutely can have them submit it through their insurance company first. Even if the insurance company is going to cover it, a lot of times, it falls within the deductible. And I think that's where the council came up with that policy a number of years ago, for instance, on providing for cleaning services, for sewer backups. You know, they would reimburse up to $500 automatically and I think that was based on that typically being the homeowner's insurance deductible. that was based on that typically being the homeowner's insurance deductible.
Okay, Mary's convinced me.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
End of report, thank you. And thanks for the great questions there. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask our Safety and Public Works chair one question regarding an agenda situation? What I asked him to? Sure can. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you give us some idea as to when, I heard that you discussed, but you did not itemize the Whittier School discussion for your March eleventh meeting? Can you tell the public more important than me, because you and I have discussed, what day you think you, that the public can expect that to be an agenda item for the entire council?
It should be on the very next council meeting.
Okay.
We are gonna, on March seventeenth, we are gonna bring it to the Safety and Public Works meeting on March seventeenth. We thought about bringing it to the special committee meeting, Mary thought also there we could just discuss it, we'll see where chip is at, we're without chip tonight for that. But I agree with you, you know, we're gonna try putting this on a fast track, move it forward. We all did tour the building, and a lot of us have, you know, done our homework with staff on, on the tour. So we plan on moving this very much. We should basically at the next council meeting have a vote on it, up and down.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Okay.
End of report.
Thank you. The at-large council seat replacement process. As you are well aware, next Monday, we're going to have those that are interested in the position, give a five minute, up to a five minute talk as to why they should be selected to be on the council. The one thing that we haven't fully discussed is exactly how we're going to do the voting. There have been a couple suggestions. One suggestion was that we do a ranking, we have eleven people, and we could do a ranking and then vote on those. Or each person, each of the six of us, select who they want. And the problem that we're gonna run into, we have to figure out before next week, is the fact that we could easily have a tie of, in theory anyway, of three people voting for two, two different people. And/or we could have a tie with three, to, you know, if the council split. And the law is, is pretty specific that if there is a tie, that the mayor breaks the tie. So the question kind of is, is do we vote as many times as we feel we want to that day? Even sometimes you can, you know, we could have, we could have one vote, we might have fifteen votes. And I just am asking what your pleasure is to, to move forward on that, because we have to have, we have to have it clear, and we have to clear it up tonight as to exactly how we're going to vote.
My question, Mr. President, is there's eleven candidates, six of us voting, and all six pick a different person, and then the mayor doesn't like our selection and would pick a different person. Why couldn't he, because he?
Because that isn't breaking the tie.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that that breaking a tie would imply that it would have to be one of the candidates that.
So the mayor would have to select one of the six of us?
If we, if we didn't revote, yes.
I think, Mr. Chair, that we should use that process of voting. I guess I had another question that I'd like to ask first, in thinking of it, it doesn't seem fair that each candidate would hear what the other one had to say. And so I think in a case like this, we could legally ask the candidates to wait in the hallway.
Well, it's going to be televised.
It'll be, okay, you can televise it, but still have the others waiting, so the last one to be interviewed hasn't heard the other ten. Whatever.
Discussion.
Discussion. Because that strikes me as the eleventh person being at a real disadvantage. And maybe the attorney wants to weigh in on that. If we have to do that, we do. But the eleventh person seems to me that would be sort of, be a tough one.
It's a public meeting, though.
Okay.
So I guess I'm not, not sure of the authority for kicking someone out of that public meeting.
Well, that's what we did when we interviewed you. I mean, there were several firms, and we only interviewed one at a time, and they couldn't listen. We did.
And that was not at a council, that was a, a committee?
But it was public.
But it was a committee meeting.
But it was public. It's a public meeting.
I have one more question then. Order that they're gonna be called in, there's eleven candidates, are we just gonna randomly pick, or?
Is there an alphabetical order?
They're gonna be picked by alphabetically or it's a people?
The, the order that we, the stuff that we sent out, it is in alphabetical order.
So that's the order that the candidates are gonna come forward in? Do we already know that?
That, that was the suggestion that we had.
Okay. Just to comment on, on the possibility of unfairness, I think, and really, Mr. Pritchett probably has more experience with this, with high school debate and stuff, I think there's probably advantages both ways. First out of the box might have a tremendous impact to be first out of the box, because they're first. Last out of the box might have a tremendous advantage, because they have to hear everybody else. But I think they should all be in the room to hear it. And it's alphabetical, it's alphabetical. It could be random drawing, it could be any, but you have to logically have a first and a last. I would favor a instant runoff ranking more than a selection of an individual, only because it brings it down to one vote. We all vote once. And I wouldn't rank all eleven, I would rank our top three. And the reason I would do that, and I would wait the ranking, your first choice is weighted higher than your second, weighted higher than your third, you will get a candidate the very first round of voting. So I would prefer that. I've been through situations, and I've been a nominee in situations where we have set records with our number of votes. And I don't know, I don't know that that's necessary. I think we have good candidates. And I'd hate to, I'd hate to see it go, get ugly. So I think that would be a way to solve, to solve the solution, you would just give your top three.
And you're, you're saying to wait one higher than?
Yeah, your first choice would be weighted with the number three, your second choice with the number?
The only question I have, and I think this is something that our attorney brought up, is that in theory, you could have somebody that's being selected that may not have had, I mean, might have had all twos.
Yep.
And that person may win over the person who actually had the most ones. Just, just.
No, I, I agree with you, Dale. I'm not a fan of the ranked voting.
Actually, that can't happen mathematically, our attorney is incorrect.
For that very reason, I would.
I just did it my head.
I think we should just sit here and vote until, it may be quicker than you think, it may not. I have no preconceived idea on this whatsoever. But it may be very quick, and it, it may not be quick. But I think we owe it to the public to go through the process in a very, in a way that I think more people will agree with if we just go through it and, so they're narrowed down that way. Through the process of, okay, let's say that you have six different people voted on in the first round. So you vote again. You might, again, have six different people, maybe even different ones. And then you go through it again. After a few rounds, I think you're going to find that there may be one or two who are coming out a little more consistently. And other people will begin to gravitate that way, just to try to, you know, because it's hopeless otherwise, is what I think.
A couple, question and comment. I mean, the first question, are we voting till we get a plurality or a majority?
Yeah.
It has to be a majority.
A majority, but in order to get a majority, we have to have four.
Right. So, you know, that kind of looks at it like, okay, we have eleven, if we vote once and six people get one vote, you get rid of the five then, and then you vote. I mean, this is, we've done this in student congress when you're voting for representatives, and then what you do is, you know, you basically are getting rid of, okay, so if we've got somebody with three, and somebody with two, and somebody with one, you get rid of the lowest vote getter, and eventually you're gonna come down to either that three to three, which the mayor can break, or a four to two. And it's actually a relatively fast process. Because you just keep eliminating the lowest vote getters.
I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable.
Could we ask our attorney as to his thoughts on that?
You know, it's, it's within council's discretion to determine the process you want to use, but, you know, as Councilman Pritchett points out, I mean, that process would be...
And I'd be more than happy, it's a fairly codified process, I can get a copy of it, I could submit it to Patrick, he could send it to everybody and see if it's, if it works or not.
I'm in favor of that, and I would make a motion that we would go that route.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So we're go, so the process will be four votes wins?
Yes.
But, well, unless we get, if it's a three-three, then the mayor breaks it.
If we get a three-three and, you know, we're deadlocked.
But wait, 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 we gotta be clear here. If it's a three-three, the mayor breaks it, because I heard somebody, you know, after a while, like, you have to set how many three-threes we're gonna have then. I mean, we can't just say three-three until we all get tired and decide that the mayor's gonna break it.
Right.
It's either the first three-three, or do we say two-three-threes, or, that needs to be clear.
I think we should at least have three-threes, and to see if somebody switches.
So if you have a tie, that's, that's, a three-three tie, three times.
Right. We'd say the mayor breaks it, that would seem okay to me.
I amend my motion to that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, that's the process. And if, if you want to give that, and then we'll get it out to the candidates so that they understand also. I don't have to be in the paper or nothing.
We're gonna.
Okay.
One more question, before we get the motion. So for the eleven candidates, you want them here, all in the same room, and what time is that again, six o'clock?
We're starting at six, and if, you know, we're gonna go in alphabetical order, so if somebody near the end decides that they don't want to come and tells us before, that's totally up to them. But we'll start it at six, and utilize up to five minutes per person.
Fifty-five minutes, so we'll be voting around seven.
That's the theory.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have a timekeeper?
Well, I actually, I'll use my phone. Really, I have it set up already, five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can bring that up.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion carries.
If I could, Councilman Parks has indicated that he may be out of town.
Pritchett.
No, Pritchett. Thank you. Pritchett has indicated that he may be out of town. So we are exploring with the help of the city attorney, the possibility of using Skype for his vote, being in attendance legally under the statute, and him voting also. And so we're gonna do a test run of that this week, Wednesday. If it works, my understanding is he will then be allowed to go to Boston. If it doesn't work, he will be here at the meeting, kind of situation.
New flight, yeah.
It's an interesting concept, I'm only aware of one other city actually doing it, but hopefully we can get it to work out to county, cities, and everyone's benefit.
And the school board, I believe did it, the Brainerd School Board did it.
Okay. We're down to new business. Authorization of DNR Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Application. Mark, is that you?
Yes. Well, yeah, this is an application that I've been working with the Noon Rotary with. You know, they've got, there's thirty-seven acres of land that they've donated to the city for city parkland. And they would like to look into a restoration of a large field area that's down there, to restore it with more natural vegetation, wildflowers, native grasses, et cetera. And there's a grant through the Conservation Partners Legacy Program that could be applied for to do this. And there is a ten percent local match, and the Noon Rotary has indicated that it's, it has a desire to be able to provide that ten percent match. And so before we were able to, before we submit, though, I wanted to make sure that I got the council's authorization to do this. There, there is a little bit of an issue with hunting down there. This grant requires that the property be open for all types of hunting, if it's, if it's awarded. We permit bowhunting there now, and we're gonna submit the grant that way, and we're gonna tell them that's what we permit, and see where it leads us. It very well, likely could mean that we'll be rejected, but we still would submit the grant, because there's another grant through this, through Conservation Partners Program that's, another grant that's available in September that we can apply for, that we do not need to stipulate hunting be allowed at the facility.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
I had two questions. The hunting thing is kind of new. I mean.
Yeah.
All kinds, you, you can't change the ordinance to allow them to discharge a shotgun within the, so, you know, if, the only thing that can be approved is bowhunting then, right? I mean, that's kind of a non-issue.
I, I, I don't know what our, it says.
We're not gonna be required to change our ordinance.
Right, there's, so that's almost a non-issue, it'll be bowhunting and that's it, right?
They might reject us.
Okay, because it's not, it's not open to the, that again. My other question is, you know, it says you can ask up to fifty thousand, how much are we asking?
This will be less than twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, I was just kind of curious, so, all right.
Any other questions? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Mark, we're back to you again for the appointment of city representatives of the Mississippi River Partnership Steering Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn it back to the administrator to make a couple comments on the applicants first.
At this point in time, and I know Mark sent you an email today, we have not received the background to our satisfaction on number seven, and/or the one that was received to the council tonight. So we've got to get those backgrounds done. But we would recommend one through six at this point in time. At a later date, we'll bring up the other ones.
I'll move the appointments.
Second.
Any other discussion? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Mr. Chair, on that subject, however, people, I also have someone who would like to apply. The person's name is Pam Wible, W-I-B-L-E, and she lives on Southwest Fort. And I noted that none of the people live on Southwest Fort, and that would be extremely impacted. She actually lives on the riverside of Southwest Fort. So I know she has to submit an application, but I'm hoping that could still be considered.
Sure.
Because I think that would be, it would be a, really not appropriate to have a committee that didn't include someone like that, who lives right there.
Unfortunately, until Ms. Wible showed some interest, no one has expressed interest that lives along the river.
I, I don't think people have really even followed it. I saw her at an event and was visiting with her about it, and she got quite interested.
Good.
And I said, well, you could apply, and she said, I think I will.
Good.
But I didn't see her name in.
Sure. Will, um, do you want me to call her?
Pardon me?
Do you want me to call her?
She's a librarian at C L C.
Oh.
So that's where you'd have to reach her.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. I think this is also for you, and that's the decommissioning approval process.
Did you vote on the, um, last one?
Yeah, we did vote on it.
Okay. Sorry. Mr. President, members of the council, if, if you would, I have some, I have a presentation I'd like to make on this one. This is a significant community issue, and I'd like to make sure that we're all on the same page with where we're at with this, if that's all right? If that's all right?
It is. It is. You think so?
Okay, thank you. First of all, you did see a corrected ordinance in front of you. Somehow, the ordinance got printed, and it said "Community Centers" on it. I don't know how that happened, but obviously, it should be for this...
But I called him because I noted it.
Yep. For decommissioning. And we'll get into that ordinance in a minute. And then also, in front of you, I place a Section 10 Administration. It's for 12A. I'll get to that in a minute as well. Okay, there's a, there are a number of things I'd like to go through with the council tonight with regard to this, so that it and the public knows where we're at with this whole issue of how we address demolitions in, that are significant in size in our community. Tonight's review is not to talk about any specifics dealing with demolition. That'll come later. What we're here tonight to do is talk about a process that'll amend our zoning ordinance to allow for a more thorough review of demolitions of significant size in the city of Brainerd. So why are we doing this amendment? As I've mentioned, there is a potential in our community to have some significantly large-scale demolitions, or we don't have a procedure in place that will permit us to review those large demolitions. Large demolitions can carry a whole host of potential concerns that might affect the public's health, safety, and welfare. I may have, I know I reviewed them with the Planning Commission. I presume the council saw a list of types of potential issues that could arise out of a major demolition in our community of that size, of significant size. Just to refresh everybody's memory and bring everybody up to date, because of that concern that was raised earlier, late last year, the city council adopted a moratorium to give us a chance to work through this. And this is where we're at right now, is working through that. You had adopted that moratorium back in December, I think it was December 3rd. Moratorium was for four months, meaning the moratorium would expire on April 4th. This really isn't a race to beat that moratorium deadline, because a moratorium can always be extended. As I, as I'll go into in a minute, we have received some, a request to have an expedited review process for a potential, what I'll, what I'm, what we call an interim use, and I'll get into that in a minute. That's mainly why we are going through with this process right now, is to try to work with that expedited process. So what is the process that we're looking at? We're going to try to establish through our zoning ordinance, a municipal review and approval of large-scale demolitions. As I mentioned, the zoning ordinance can be the tool that permits that to happen. But currently, we don't have any language in the zoning ordinance to permit it. So if we're going to permit it, we have to amend the zoning ordinance. Minnesota statutes calls and allows for municipalities to use something called an interim use. And in the staff report that I presented to you on the very front page of my memo, that's language directly out of the state statute dealing with interim uses. And the definition of an interim use by statute is an interim, a temporary use of property until a particular date, until a particular date, until the occurrence of a particular event, or until zoning regulations no longer permit it. The key in this is that there's a particular date, or until the occurrence of the particular event ceases to exist. That's the definition of what's called an interim use. The authority to use interim uses is also identified by state statute, and this is language that we've adopted in our zoning ordinance directly from the statute. In reviewing interim uses, the governing body may grant permission for these types of interim uses if the use conforms to the zoning regulations. To the date or event will terminate, the use can be identified with certainty. Permission of the use will not impose additional costs on the public if it is necessary for the public to take the property in the future, or the user agrees that any condition that the governing body deems appropriate for permission of the use. What the state statute also specifies is that a hearing needs to be conducted if we're going to review interim use in accordance with Minnesota, with Minnesota Planning Statute, which requires a notice and hearing by the Planning Commission. You've heard us talk several times about the city of Sartell. And that city, I'm having gone through a process similar to this before we have. When it was going through its process, it did all kinds of background research, and I had several conversations with my counterpart in Sartell. We talked about the process that it used to issue an interim use permit for the activity it's got going in its community. And it provided me with everything that it put together. I mean, they were wonderful. They gave me every document that they used in their process down there. One of the documents they gave me was the definition, up to now, I've been using the term demolition. What we're contemplating in this interim use is not using the word demolition, but using the word decommissioning. That means something different. And we presented, actually, I think I call it definition. It's not a definition, but it's, it's a type of interim use that'll be added, it's the type of interim use that will be added to the zoning ordinance. That language was presented to the Planning Commission at its November meeting for discussion and review. And I gave you, you look in the staff report, there is the description of what decommissioning a property is. Let me read that. "Decommissioning, which is defined as the significant removal of machinery from service within a site, or the demolition of existing buildings, pavements, structures, or facilities, and/or site remediation for the purposes of leaving a property barren for an unspecified amount of time." Then it talks about a site plan shall be submitted and is subject to Section 10 of this ordinance. That's why I put that in front of you, that Section 10, that's what it's referring to. Section 10 is our zoning ordinance referring to administration, site, and building plan submittal requirements. That's what that's referring to. At the November meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed that language for decommissioning that would be added to the zoning ordinance as an interim use, and we're comfortable with the language enough to go ahead with a public hearing. And what it decided that the language that the interim use language would be added to would be three zoning districts. The I-1, the I-2, which is our light industry and general industry, and our mixed-use, our MU zoning district. So there are three districts that it recommended to supply to. They had the hearing in December, and have recommended approval of the language called decommissioning to be added to the zoning ordinance with a couple of changes. In the decommissioning language, we define, we use it, we use a term called machinery. And the Planning Commission said, what's machinery? What do you mean? So they asked that a definition of machinery be added to that text. And also, they thought there was a couple of more categories of land besides barren that should be included. So they suggested that the terms vacant and abandoned be added to the text for what decommissioning is. So now it would read "and/or site remediation for the purposes of leaving a property barren, vacant, or abandoned." And the text that we gave you in the ordinance should have a definition of what we're referring to as machinery, which is machinery is defined as a system of related elements that operate in a defined manner. And then the words vacant and barren have been added to the text. And the text, as you can see in the ordinance here, is for the I-1, I-2, and the mixed-use district.
Is that why we have Section 1, Section 3, and Section 4?
Yes. To illustrate what adding the decommissioning text would look like, I've provided you with a copy of the I-1 district from our zoning ordinance. As we all know, the zoning district has a list of permitted uses, has a list of accessory uses, has a list of conditional uses, and as the statute specifies, it also gives us the authority to have a list of interim uses. So what we are doing, well, actually, today, in an industrial one district, outdoor storage as a principal use is an interim use. Billboards is a interim use. We've added C, that language, that text, decommissioning, as another type of interim use. Okay? So by adding that language to the zoning ordinance and making this text amendment, once it gets added to the zoning ordinance, then that is the mechanism, that is the tool that any, any individual property owner that's in an I-1, I-2, or mixed-use, that has demolition that they're proposing, would need to apply for before, and get approved before they could commence a decommissioning of site. Should the city council consider the text acceptable that's being presented? Tonight, we've got, what is the first reading to formally approve then the zoning ordinance to add the text decommissioning to I-1, I-2, and the mixed-use? The normal procedure would be that the second, the second reading of the ordinance would occur on March 17th. Here's where I'm going to get into a little bit of 12B. However, Wassah, the current property owner, has requested an expedited review process. Has asked us to take a look at our approval time, to see what we can do to shrink that down for them, and meet all the statutory requirements for noticing and holding meetings to do that. I provided you with some information on that. So if the council so chooses to use that expedited process, the second reading could occur at a special meeting, which you'd have to adjourn to tonight if you do this, on March 13th. Just so that you know, should the city council wait until its regular meeting on the 17th, four days later than the 13th meeting? The, you'd only be saving about four or five days if you waited until the 17th. But because they've asked us to look at the process as confined as possible, that's why I gave it the quid pro quo. We're to follow the normal procedure on reviewing this whole, whole thing, getting the language in the zoning ordinance, and then they make application for the conditionally, or the interim use, whoever that is going to be. We'd be, the process would be all the way out until April 27th, under normal. So I thought that, that this was such a big enough issue that I thought it necessary to try to walk through the key points of this, let, you know, make the public aware that we're not getting any specifics. It's adding language to the zoning ordinance to allow someone to come before us to do decommissioning in industrial one, two, or mixed-use district. And that's why we're having the first reading tonight. So if I haven't totally confused everybody, I'll try to answer any questions.
The question I have is if we waited until our normal meeting on the 17th, and then had a special meeting on the 27th, that would mean, because we're already having a special meeting on the 10th for a different purpose, and then there's, on the 11th, there's also essentially a special meeting, and I guess, you know, if we have to, we have to, but it seems to me that we should be able to still expedite the process if we have, have it at a regular meeting on the 17th, and then have a special meeting near the end of the month, so we don't have to wait until April.
Right. If you wait until, if you have the second reading, presuming the first reading passes tonight, if you have the second reading on the 17th, the Planning Commission could, could have a meeting and conduct the public hearing to consider the interim use permit request on March 31st. Technically, it could probably be the 28th. That's a Friday. I don't, I'm not sure if we want to be conducting public hearings on a Friday night. And then the city council could receive its recommendation as soon as April 2nd.
Mr. Chair, I would speak in favor of expediting it. I don't think it's a secret that there's someone ready and waiting to come in there and do something. And the second part of that is there's someone else hoping to do some development there. And I think to expedite it as quickly as we can, even if it only is a few days, it certainly shows the city's interest in trying to work and expedite it and get it done and get it ready. So I would anticipate that the special meeting would take a half an hour or less. It isn't a big deal. It's an inconvenience to come for that time, true, but nonetheless, I think there are people waiting, and I think we want the word to get around that we're ready and willing to work with people who are ready and willing to come in and do something to promote this community. So I would speak in favor of the special. I would.
Very quickly, I agree with Mrs. Cole. I can't speak it any better than she did. My only question for Mr. Oskard is, and I'll ask it to you, Mr. Chair, is, did I understand that, of course, the second reading is our public hearing, but did I also understand that there's still one more that has to be done through planning and zoning, or?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and when would that, I mean, when would that happen in the expedited schedule?
That's on the last page.
If, if, if you...
So what good would it do, my question then becomes, what good would it do to have us, to have that hearing? When it's...
You have to, to, you have to have that hearing to put the language of decommissioning into the zoning ordinance. Then, once the language to permit decommissioning is in the zoning ordinance, it gives someone something to apply for.
Yeah.
They apply for an interim use permit for decommissioning. We then turn around, and the Planning Commission gets involved by holding the public hearing for the presentation of how the decommissioning is going to occur, and then it can make recommendations to the council on any issues that might be of concern, just like a conditional use.
I understand, but isn't this a little backwards?
No.
In that, okay, because we will have theoretically already approved the ordinance on the 13th based on the outline that you just outlined.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, to put decommissioning in the zoning ordinance.
Got it. Okay. The moratorium was for four months, which would expire the first part of April.
Yes, sir.
So by expediting this, we also will not have to extend the moratorium that we have in place, and that's why I would be in favor of expediting, because, you know, it's going to call question on the moratorium on the April 1st meeting. We've got this in place, then you don't need to do that. So I'll be in favor of it.
Technically, you may, technically, you may have to extend the moratorium for a couple of days.
Couple of days? Okay, and that's a question.
To me, the question of expedite is, is kind of the question, because you said normally, we would, we would have to wait until May, if we followed the normal timeline. So if we expedite it in the sense that we're going to make sure that we have a vote at least by the first meeting in, in April, the question is, do we want to have a special meeting, which is like three days, four days ahead of time? Or, now, will you not be there? You'd be out of town.
That week, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that we'll have enough people.
Okay. I think we'll be okay. Are you comfortable?
And knock on wood, that we can get, we can get a quorum of the Planning Commission today we want to have that.
It was the 13th, and what other date for us?
Probably early April then.
19th? No, no.
27.
27, yeah. 13th and 27th.
Another quick question I have for the council. Remember, tonight's... Remember, tonight, the purpose of tonight is the first reading of the ordinance. The special meeting is important and, you know. On the expedited process, we're setting it up so that if the planning commission has a meeting, and I'll use the 25th date because we have a hearing that night, Tuesday night. Wednesday morning, staff would turn around, get everything that the planning commission did the night before, get it in a form for the council to look at, get it sent out to the council on Wednesday. You'd have Wednesday to look at it, come back on Thursday, and be expected to make a decision.
We can do that.
Well, that was my question, make sure. Is the council going to be okay with that quick turnaround on a significant issue that could be coming before the planning commission on a major, major decommissioning?
I'm okay with that.
I think.
Okay, want to point it out.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. Have the interested parties been made aware of what's being proposed in the ordinance change?
Yes.
So they have both been made aware of?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question, which I, it sounds like nitpicking, but it's the kind of thing attorneys love to nitpick and all that. And while you carefully defined machinery, you didn't define significant. So what is the significant removal?
That'll be the prerogative of the city council.
Okay.
Hey, so, first thing we have to do, if there's a motion, is to do the first reading.
I'll move.
Second, discussion. Now, this, this part is new to me. You're usually the one that moves forward with that process traditionally. We have the first reading.
Yep. That's it, you just vote.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, so then at the next meeting, which now we have to decide if the next meeting is going to be the 13th or if it's going to be the normal 17th.
I'm going to move that we have a special meeting, the 13th, for the purpose of expediting this situation.
Second, okay. Any other discussion?
Time.
Uh, time?
Yep.
What works for everybody?
Six.
6:00 PM, okay.
Okay, so, 6:00 PM on the 13th. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Then, Mr. President, don't forget to adjourn to that.
Okay, now we're down to public forum. Public forum is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed.
Hi.
Hi, Jeff.
Jeff Chazak, 511 D Street. Just one thing, I noticed our city attorney mentioned the Skype and perhaps being used by Mr. Pritchett. I believe if you check the, I think it's the open meeting law and that there's a requirement that the person, the elected person that's using Skype is required to give a public notice and the location where he's at.
Right, with the, yes.
And you also have to pay for that out of your own pocket? Just so you know, a public notice. Government, I believe the government entity can't pay for that, so that's something just to be aware of.
I think it'd just be a matter of probably posting a piece of paper as long as we notify where he's going to be at. So I think he could probably afford a piece of paper and a pen, so.
I think it's a public notice where he's located?
Yeah, we'll.
In the location where he's at?
The location is, yes.
Okay, all right. The item tonight on your adjournment is to go into closed session under 13D 05 subdivision 3. Have you all been provided with that statute?
Actually, I'll read that again, but we've been, it's been pointed out that it's actually 13D 05 subdivision 3 is the correct.
Okay, so that then is a subdivision 3 C 3? The same reason you went into closed session prior to tonight? I mean, in the two meetings prior to tonight? When you met with the public utility?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for purchase or sale of real or personal property, yes.
And you've already done that?
Already done what?
You've already offered the price. That's already been done, it's been made public. And now you have due diligence on the agenda, correct? Nothing about purchase?
The agenda says due diligence review.
Right.
That's what it says.
So where does it say anything about purchase, potential, offer, counteroffer? And there's a document that was provided, correct, to the council?
That is correct.
And it's been kept confidential?
The documents that have been provided to the council have been considered confidential at this time, yes.
And what statute are you keeping that confidential?
Under, if I can, 13D 05 3C 3.
That's not, that's not the data, though. That's not anything to do with the data, that's the reason for the meeting to go into closed session. That's not allowing you to have the document kept confidential. And that document is supposed to be a public document. And I'm concerned you're violating open meeting law by going into closed session under this item because you've already determined the price, you've expressed a letter of intent, I believe, or a proposed purchase agreement. And to go back now, and I believe because you have due diligence down there, that would make the assumption, I believe accurately, that you have some kind of report back from bar engineering, and you're not making that public. You don't have the right to do that. So whatever, whatever purpose you go into closed session for, you have to talk, you know, you've already done that. So to say tonight that you're going into closed session to talk about the purchase price, you've already done that. So if somebody can explain to me what the document is, give me the, maybe the title of it, it's.
Yeah, I don't know the entire facts and timeline here because I haven't been involved previously on this issue, but developing offers and counteroffers is kind of an ongoing process. And that information or that ability to close the meeting continues until an offer is accepted or withdrawn. And I don't believe that's the case here.
So I think that's.
What you have it down is due diligence. How does this apply to due diligence going into, going into this closed session? It has nothing to do with the item you just listed and read under statute. It's not the proper statute to go into due diligence. There is, there is nothing to go into closed session under due diligence. And that's what you have on your agenda. And that's what I believe you have that document in front of you that has to do with due diligence, which is what bar engineering was coming to, before you on, or the, coming up with the report on. So I, I would just caution the council that there is a fine of $300 each out of your own pocket to go into closed session under a false pretense, as appears you're doing.
And I disagree with you, Mr. Chazak. The process that the council is going to be considering is looking at the offer that they made. They're going to be looking at the due diligence part of the agreement for the purchase that was made in approximately October of 2013, looking at the due diligence numbers before the due diligence time period runs out, and to determine if they wish to continue with this purchase.
See, once again, you're not talking about the price. You're talking about continue with the purchase, going through your due diligence.
Jeff, I've got two things. Number one, this is on the agenda. So you've already mentioned to us what your concern is. I'm going to let our attorney talk, and we will abide by what the attorney says, so.
Well, of course, you always do, Dale. I understand it.
We have to. What I'm saying is that the open forum is designed for things that aren't on our agenda.
And I'm not talking about what's on your agenda, I'm talking about what isn't, and that's your due diligence document. You cannot go into closed session to talk about a document that is not.
Okay, we're going to talk to our attorney. He's going to guide us through, and, you know, I understand where you're coming from.
Is anybody here going to stand up for the public's right to know what you're discussing tonight? Because it should be public. It should be a matter of public record, what you have in that document.
I'm not an attorney, so I can't tell you whether that's the case or not.
Why was, why was the statute listed as 13.04?
Hypographical error, as far as I know.
And why was it only subdivision 3 then? Because prior meetings, it was subdivision 3, item C, paragraph 3, or paragraph 3, C, item 3.
Eric, do you want, do you have any?
I was just going to comment earlier on the notion that this wasn't related to the price. And again, I don't, I haven't seen the document. But the authority to go into closed session to discuss offers and counteroffers includes all terms of a purchase or an acquisition. So not just a dollar figure per se, but other terms that would impact the offer.
Mr. Chairman, I think everybody knows this by now, but I'm going to reiterate that I do object to the closed session tonight. I reviewed the document that we received. I didn't see anything in it that shouldn't be shared with the public. That's my concern. This entire process has been somewhat shrouded in secrecy and kept from the light of day except for a few euphemistic and not very accurate comments that have been made to the public. The document that is before us tonight, and Mr. Chazak is precisely correct. The agenda says due diligence review. Now, if the public cannot have confidence that what the agenda says is not what will be followed, that in itself is serious. Every council member here should be concerned with that. Whether you agree with anything else that I say, or Mr. Chazak, or anyone else says, you should be concerned that the information that is put out to the public which clearly says review, due diligence review, is what should be done. So I object because, in my view, the due diligence report contains nothing that should not be shared with the public. Now, if there is some other ulterior motive that has not been made public in this, such as that we are going to review the offer, or we are going to make a counteroffer, or we are going to withdraw the offer, that should have been said, that those were options to be considered, it was not. Furthermore, Mr. Chairman, I have begged this council at least twice in the past to have some sort of a public hearing on this issue. As I say, it has been shrouded in secrecy and misconceptions and downright falsehoods. Even some of the material that is in this report vary somewhat with information I have from some of the same sources. And I say very, Mr. Chairman, you can cut me off, as has been done at every discussion about this issue, but I do object to a closed meeting. There is no purpose for it. It is time for the public to see what is being discussed. What are you afraid to have the public see? This information, and I'm going to continue this, I read it two or three times. The financial information is subject to questions that could take hours. You aren't going to have time for that in due diligence. I'm finished, keep going.
You know, Mr. Chairman, you also have a issue that you spent 20-plus minutes on talking about statutes regarding public hearings and all that. It's interesting how you're following those to a T as best you can. But when it comes to this open meeting law, public knowledge, all that, you're doing something you want to do, but you're not allowed to do. And your attorney considered tonight and tell you it's all fine and dandy, but it's not. And it's, and you will be responsible for a fine and an open meeting law violation, and probably in more than one issue because the meeting will be recorded, correct? Because it's mostly recorded, okay, you've been doing that? Okay, those will become public as soon as this deal is done, one way or the other. You're also planning on spending over $4 million of the public's money, and you're not telling them what's going on.
Okay.
Over $4 million. And you're not, you're going to sit here and go into closed session and talk about due diligence? I think it's time that people in this city start to get down about what you people are doing. Not necessarily just about the damn.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome. See you at the next transit meeting.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky. Good night, listeners.
Yeah. Eric, do you have anything else to?
No, I think some good points were made. I mean, the close, the authority to go into closed session is limited to discussing terms that would impact the city's offer or counteroffer that, and you can't go beyond that. And it does have to be taped recorded. And as you pointed out, you know, the information becomes public after the process is completed, or the offer is, or the process is abandoned, I guess would be the other alternative.
And what statute is that under, sir?
That's under that same provision under.
All right, anybody else for open forum?
I'd just like to know what the definition of "lucky" is.
Okay, anybody for open forum? Anybody else for open forum? Okay, close the open forum at 9:04.
You're looking for me, aren't you? You're looking for me.
Okay, mayor's report.
Wait, have we just moved right along here? And I'll start off with my report. First off, our police chief isn't here, and I think everybody that drives or has arrived here this evening realizes the roads are still very slippery. Accidents reports are hard to fill out, they cost you money. And I would recommend that, and I've been, I drive around the town every day, the roads are still very, very greasy, and so please use caution, extreme caution. It's almost as bad as what it is in Texas right now because the roads are ice. And so with that, I'm just urging caution. The other thing is, we will be having a St. Patty's Day parade coming up here in a couple of weeks. And I bet you two bits of a doughnut that the only thing that's going to be green is the Irish hats that they wear. So, but that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks. And with that, I'm in the.
How about your proclamation?
Huh? The proclamation, what do you want me to do with it?
I want you to make, talk about it.
Okay. This, okay? This is a proclamation that was given to me. I, between the administrator and I, we, I kind of reworded it because what I wanted to do is to make it politically correct. I think that's the word I want. And with that, I'll read it, and then everybody here on council, I believe, received a copy of it. And this was at the request of Mr. Cole.
And it's the history committee really making the request.
And for people's information, the 100th anniversary that is being celebrated starting June 16th is actually, we are going to be celebrating with Mary and I think Carl Foss.
And four committee members.
And four committee members.
Everybody else, we hope.
This building was built in 1914, and so this is the 100th anniversary of this building. It was remodeled in about 1990 to about 1993, I think they finally completed it. Anyway, you want me to mention about the Native Americans as far as?
Yes, I would appreciate if you would because we are, we want to do an event with the Native Americans, and they are holding out for this proclamation from the city and a few other things. So before we can proceed with those plans, we need to have this.
Okay, well, I will read this proclamation. Like I say, I did take the prerogative of going through and trying to make it more politically correct. It was written quite well, but there were a number of things that I felt were needed to be updated and corrected. Whereas the city of Reno is celebrating the 100th anniversary of the construction of City Hall and the history of the city, including the foundation and rich heritage of the city, which includes the important role of the Native Americans. Whereas the state of Minnesota declared in 2012 "A Day of Remembrance and Reconciliation in the State," which, while remembering the dark past, detestable acts, and grievances, called for a time of remembrance and also of reconciliation. And whereas looking forward to continued mutual understanding and. And whereas looking forward to continued mutual understanding and acceptance, while respecting our differences and recognizing the tribal self-governance and cultural heritage of our neighboring tribes, to seek ways to bring our communities even closer together." And whereas, in a week celebrating the history of the city in many ways, with participation of people of all ages in diverse events, the participation of our neighboring tribes is welcome to help enrich our community celebration. Now therefore, I, James E. Wallene, the 40th Mayor of the city of Brainerd, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the day of June 16th, 2014, as a day of reconciliation, as we look forward to fruitful and constructive relations between our city and Na- Native Americans. And witness thereof, I hear, have here unto, to set my hand and cause the seal that the city of Brainerd to be affixed as 16th day of June 2014, and that has the city's seal. And that is the proclamation that I have, we will present to.
Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City attorney, any?
Nothing.
No report. Administrator? No report. City engineer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, uh, one item, as the mayor mentioned, I'd like to warn everybody that with, uh, this freshly fallen snow on top of the icy roads, to take extreme caution when driving. Uh, we do know that we've got some, uh, snow buildup on, uh, a number of streets, and as soon as it warms up, our crews will be getting out and trying to peel, uh, those streets down the best we can, and we tried a little bit, uh, during this cold snap, and just, you know, we couldn't make any progress at all, so, uh, but it's supposed to warm up towards the end of the week, so we hope to make some progress. Uh, when we are out, uh, trying to scrape that off the streets, we are gonna be, uh, having loaders out in back of the graders, uh, trying to clean up driveways a little bit, because if we plug a driveway with, uh, this snow, it's, it's gonna be just not movable, so, um, uh, so we'll try to get our streets in shape, uh, best we can, and.
I want to commend you, though, for doing a fine job this winter with all the snow that you had, you know, I haven't received that many complaints, Jeff, and you've done a wonderful job with your crews up to now.
Yeah, the crews do the work.
It's been a challenge.
Could I just add to that? Uh, you've gotten written, even written people, or people have written to the city complimenting you and your crew on, on the fine job that, uh, has been done, and it's been a hard winter for the drivers and, as well as the pedestrians and the, um, you know, automobile drivers, but I, and like I say, and I appreciate your reemphasizing the caution, because it is slippery.
It is.
Yes, it's bad, and we're, hopefully, we're only a week or two away from, uh, some nice sunny skies and temperatures in the 40s, and we'll, we'll try to get it in shape real quick.
Beautiful dreamer you are.
That's also calling out for the pedestrians, not only the people, but the pedestrians gotta watch, too.
City planner?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, last week, the Green Step City Committee met for the first time. Um, they decided to meet once a month, and are starting to go over the, uh, best practice methods that are, um, part of, uh, the green, part of becoming a Green Step City, and trying to, um, determine which steps to recommend we take towards becoming a Green Step City. So they'll be making report down the road. Um, just wanna let you know that the planning commission, uh, meeting next week, it will be having a public hearing on some changes that are gonna be made to the North Town West subdivision. Um, that's the one that's, uh, started with the attached single-family units on the north side of North Town Street. Um, that entire development was planned to be a, a type of attached unit association development, um, but since it went into foreclosure and the new buyer, um, is planning to change how that is gonna be developed, and is now proposing to, um, is proposing duplex, uh, side-by-side units, um, north of North Town Street, um, on some of the, um, outlots that are there, there'll be five units planned. So if that goes through the approval process, that plat could be, um, we could see some building permits for some units this summer up there. The other thing I wanted to mention, did you all happen to see this weekend in the Minneapolis Tribune? There was an article about the Court of Appeals upholding Winona's rental limits law. Uh, in, several years ago, the city of Winona enacted a ordinance that limited rental units to 30% of properties on any particular block? And that was challenged in Winona. Um, and it went to the, uh, Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals uphold Winona's, um, what do they call it, the, um, 30% law that they have there? So, um, there, I know there've been a number of communities that have been waiting for a decision on this, on this ruling. So I, I, you know, I just wanted, I was curious if you were, but were, and if you wanna copy the article, I can put it in your boxes, um, so.
Mr. Chair, I did read the article, I also noted that the Institute of Justice is getting involved, so it will be going to the Supreme Court.
Mm-hmm.
And my estimate is that it will, uh, the Supreme Court will reverse the Court of Appeals for the simple reason that it really puts a terrible burden on a property owner who may be moving, have to move, and thus, it could happen, that that person's house sits there vacant, can't sell it, can't rent it, and that's an undue burden. So I think there's gonna be more to that than, than we've seen so far.
That could happen.
Anything else, Mark?
No, thank you.
Fire chief?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a couple things tonight. Uh, we had 12 firefighters go through Officer One here in the last month and a half, and they all passed their testing and they're state certified, which truly does help not only myself as a manager, but helps the city with just the, the, the basic skills of firefighting. We also, if you remember, hired six brand-new firefighters, and they also finished all of their training, and they're online to do things. With that said, I, not a lot of people have the chance to fight fire when it's 20 below windshield, 20 below temperature and 30, 30 to 40 below windshields. I'd just like to thank those guys, because it's a lot of work when it's that cold. That's all I have tonight.
Park director's not here, and council president doesn't have anything. Any other committee reports?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, we.
We've got several adjournments.
Several, yeah.
Yes.
Um, to, uh, special meeting, uh, to be held on the 10th in the city hall chambers to determine a large council seat replacement, to safety and public works committee meeting to be held on Tuesday, March 11th, at 4:00 P.M. in city hall council chambers, and to March 13th at 6:00 P.M. for a special meeting, um, regarding the, uh, PUC, or regarding the...
Interuse permit.
Interuse, thank you.
Second.
And to closed session, uh, pursuant to 13D oh five, to discuss Hydrodam due diligence review. I heard a second.
Evans, I mean.
And once again, I do protest the closed session, I believe it is unnecessary, but, I do intend to sit in on it, because I believe I need to hear what's being talked about.
All in favor?